New snow come from all this just happened today.
Please stand for the bunch of allegiance being led by Peter Martin.
United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation.
Welcome to the what is the second regular meeting of the board trustees for the month of March 2024. Let's go straight to the minutes. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the March 11th 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fandesa.
One second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All of it. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I was like the minutes. I would, there's a couple of occasions where description of my statements where we describe the tone of voice. It says the phrase is raising the voice. We've never actually put the tone. Just put the actual spoken words. I think that it should remain that way. I know in the past 20 months. But has raised your voice and it is not then reflected in the minutes. And it more should it be so.
Actually, it is reflected in the minutes if you go back even when audience members. And I will say expressing frustration so and so stated. So it is true that I have done that before.
Yeah, well, expressing frustration, I think the same.
Well, but you did raise your voice.
I did. I did raise my voice, but so does every member. Unless you said stated that every time somebody's raised their voice, then it shouldn't. It either should be there.
It's getting more frequent.
Or not at all.
It's getting more frequent and you're getting louder and more aggressive.
Okay, so all right, actually, let me.
Comment also on that.
So you're saying in the last 18 months, there wasn't. It's actually.
You're getting more aggressive. You're raising your voice higher. You end it.
So you're, oh, you're just targeting.
I'm not targeting you. Anybody can see.
I'm feeling targeted.
Okay, and I, at this point, I would suggest that you raise an amendment. The person that had made the motion was trustee Fandesa. So Bernadette, do you accept the amendment?
I do not because.
Is that sorry?
I do not. I think this this goes for Frank and myself. We should all be more cognizant of how we are using our voices and tone. On maybe this will be a measure to help us be aware that we are, you know, flying off the handle sometimes or or. You know, we we all are guilty for sure, except for Mary. We can all say Mary has not been guilty of raising her voice. But you know, this does apply and you know, this is not the first time where, you know, we've had these moments. And I will say you were you in particular are very, I maybe it's not, I don't know that sometimes when I when I get frustrated. But it got it went from zero to pretty loud pretty quick. So I do not accept the motion change just as a as a measure perhaps in the future. We all are more aware of how we talk and have it in record.
Well, we have a record of everyone for raising their voice. Don't make it on that. Oh.
But what we don't have is a statement within the minutes describing the tone of voice. So unless we're going to go back and amend all those minutes to reflect the tone, we shouldn't start now.
Yeah, I feel that Democrats, particularly me and Sean, are being targeted by a new initiative. And I object to it. So, for example, last meeting for the first time ever, unprecedented manner. The village clerk inserted herself into a board conversation, saying, lower your voice.
Now, I ask you to please stop raising your voice.
Yes, and you have never done that. And Bernadette just admitted that she has raised her voice. Frank, as we all know, has raised her voice. Your friends in the audience have raised their voice. You have never inserted yourself into a conversation for any of those people. Furthermore, it is not, in my opinion, the position of the village clerk to insert themselves into a board discussion. I I have been to a lot of board meetings throughout this area. I have never seen a village board or a village clerk insert herself the way or themselves the way you did at the last board meeting to interrupt a board conversation. I appreciate that we all want to engage in civil discourse. However, this is a contested political space. And, for example, I raised my voice because I was cut off and I was denied the ability to continue a point I was making. When someone is shut down, a natural response that almost everyone in this room will have is potentially to sound annoyed and potentially to raise their voice. Bernadette has admitted to raising her voice when she feels passionately about something. She's interrupted Liz, raised her voice at Liz. Frank, as we all know, raises his voice at regular intervals since he got here and before. And no comment has ever been made in the minutes or by the clerk at a meeting. And I would hate to see the clerk's position weaponized, so to speak, to try to dampen down the voices of the Democrats on this board. And I think that is inappropriate and a degradation of the position.
So.
I have an additional amendment, too.
Am I not allowed to speak?
Okay.
I appreciate it. I think the notion that two wrongs make a right suddenly is bogus. I think that the clerk explained herself to state that it's escalating and as such, it's going to become more frequent if it continues. And there's notion that it's based on Democrats or whoever. I don't really care who it is. I told you in the last meeting, it's going to stop. And it's not going to continue or we're going to be adjourning meetings if it continues in any way, shape or form. Theory, it is not appropriate, is aggressive, and it is something that our employees, our staff members here do not deserve. If you have around them in that manner. I don't know where that diatribe just came from, but that was inappropriate, just as much belittling the staff member in front of a crowd at this point in time. That's enough enough in that respect. So I wouldn't agree with it either. It sounds like Bernadette does not agree with the change. Your other amendment.
Another amendment is in section 15, other business. The statement says trustee Raymond said he's not aggressive, he's passionate. That's just a fragment of my actual statement. My statement was much longer and I talked about transparency. I haven't had a chance to look at the recording, but I would just ask that the clerk would go back and actually put my statement in that was recorded and not just the fragment.
Same question to Bernadette as the maker of the motion.
No, go watch you yourself at the last meeting. So you just admitted you didn't watch it. So you have no idea how you spoke to people. So no.
I I know that I had an additional statement regarding transparency that was left out.
She's only legally required to summarize.
But she left out the subject matter.
It does an injustice to board members when the full content, not not everything they said, but the intent and the significant piece of what they said is is deliberately omitted or or inadvertently omitted. I feel like, again, the Democrats, I feel, have been given short shrift in these minutes. Just a question of when we raise it. Last meeting, I had the exact same concern. There was a statement where it said Ben was frustrated, period, as if you can read my mind. Well, what did I say? And why was I frustrated? That needed to be in the minutes. And luckily, I'm thankful I had a little recourse there. But in general, we could have three sentences of what a public says out there and forced four words in response on in these minutes, and it's been in balance for quite some time.
I think we're worried about all those sort of situations, maybe more be more succinct and to the point. I think what happens is you guys go on for speeches and honestly, her only requirement is to summarize. So if you're concerned about your specific point being put across, get to the point, say it, that it could be the record.
Well, then I request the table these minutes until I have an opportunity to review the recording so that I can give verbatim what I said in the meeting so that she can put us in.
An emotion. Are you making a motion?
I'm I'm making a motion to table. Until such a time I can review.
Motion to table, second. All in favor? Roll call, please.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Fandesa?
No.
Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
No. Can I get a roll call vote now on the original question of the minutes?
The the last comment I'd like to make is that I do not feel this has been escalating. That is a false narrative. I feel like actually it's been somewhat better, but whenever the rules of procedure are not followed, that is asking for conflict and escalation. And so what I ask you, Frank, is to follow the rules of procedure so that things don't have, people don't feel shut down. People don't feel unheard and there isn't that escalation because it's a natural response to that action.
And in the meeting where you had the most attention, let's say, I wasn't the presiding officer. So I'm not sure what you're talking about. Can we get roll call vote, please?
Trustee Baskin?
What is the motion again?
On the minutes. As as red.
No.
That's enough. Okay.
Trustee Fandesa?
Yeah.
Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Raymond?
No.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, three to two. The minutes have been approved. No presentations tonight. We were hoping to get one from USG Water, but we're still working with them to get our contract amendments together with Don Rhodes. She's got more on that in the next meeting indeed. Public comment agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. As I always say, this is a good time for those on Zoom. If you do want to give a public comment, to raise your hand on Zoom while we take care of folks in the room. I should also conclude that if you did send an email message regarding sidewalks especially, those messages have been sent to the trustees. It's sent to earlier today to in the last little bit. So you have them in your emails in case you need them. So we have four that I remember so far and three minutes will be the timing and list.
Okay, I have comments on two items. Liz Kormus 89 Hyde on the budget. There, I believe, was a motion made, although it's in tiny print at the bottom of the agenda, scheduled budget workshops. Budget workshops have been done the last five more years and actually, right, you attended those. So they must have been valuable for you when you weren't a village official. So I think very much encourage you to please hold workshops. They are very valuable. There started to look at the budget. There are a number of questions I can pass them on. But I I think we need to hear from from the departments on that. On the issue of the stop signs, stop signs are not, hey, well, recommended measures by professionals. Before we do any actions on Hyde and Malta, I believe we need to have baseline data. If you remember back while I was still a trustee, I told you about the C D C R T C offering free traffic counts and journey. So we can get the data without paying for it, see what the issue is, see how many people are speeding, et cetera. Going through stop signs, et cetera, and then do an action and then see again after six months, have them come back, re-measure again. Otherwise, it's just anecdotal as to, you know, and frankly, you dismiss anecdotal information from residents of Hyde. So I think we need real data. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Gary. Watch your step around that.
Give this Jennifer.
That's not Jennifer.
I'm sorry. Well, okay.
Is it a statement or not a good? It looks like a budget request.
It's a budget request. So Gary Stevenson, 45 West Hyde. I'm representing the historic district commission, of which I'm the co-chairman. And I'd like to submit a budget request for signage for the historic district to delineate the historic district. There are five signs that would be required to do that. There are two signs that exist on Hyde. At this point in time, they're very old, damaged and not consistent with other signage of the village. So we'd like to add five signs that will designate the area. The cost would be about $100 a sign and something consistent with the signage of the village, particularly like the parking signs that we have now that have the little arch and the the spring on them, we think would be appropriate. We would also need to have them installed. I spoke with the DPW. Those would cost about $100 with materials and labor to install the signs. That can be a separate budget item. It could be incorporated within the DPW budget. And so again, that would be about $500. So again, what we're requesting is is hopefully a budget line item for this work to help avoid some of the confusion that we had last year. Budget were the only record of what was being requested was in the budget workshops and we had to go back to videos and a lot of confusion about what was what. So in that respect, I'm requesting a budget item so that we can handle it properly efficiently. Thank you. I'm sorry. I came in late and I was.
Maybe else in the house? Yes, right. You guys can kick over that green wire.
Ray Allen, 16 Middlebrook Avenue. Two items on the agenda I'd like to speak on. Notice that there's a request for $1,000 pertaining to parks or. To approve funding for $1,000 for Village Memorial Day Parade. Big part of the parade is the parade group. And each year it starts up at the north end of the village, comes down through, stops at the bridge and et cetera. One of the key areas that it starts at is the V or the triangle of the north end of the village. And each year, the Rotary Club puts in money to try and beautify that because it's an ugly, ugly little park. I'm getting together with a few, not only Rotary, but a few others to see if we can get some funding to put perennials in that garden so that it doesn't have to be good money going after that every year. Rotary works hard to earn their money and to put, you know, $400 or $500 every year into flowers that die off and never come back. Gets to be ridiculous. So I'm looking not for a budget item, but looking for maybe some money out of the parks budget so that we can get some perennials to put in there. I've already talked with folks about procuring the product. I have somebody that's willing to design it. We just need to get some money to put it in there. Rotary is going to make a donation again this year. But we'd like to do it in front. So it doesn't have to be replaced every year or dies off in a month. So by the middle of summer, you're going down through there and it's ugly again.
What motion you're referring to?
Which one?
Well.
The $1,000 for the Memorial Day Parade. I'm tying it to that because that's the chief. That's the chief thing we do with that triangle. We put in red, white and blue carnation or not carnations.
Miracles?
No, 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 triniums. To try and get Americana spirit and that into there. So that's what I would like to see if we can do to help us out with that. The second thing is that Liz touched on is the additional study that we want to do pertaining to Hyde Boulevard. There was a study done, if I'm not mistaken, a few years ago as part of another item that did study the traffic and did study the speed of traffic and that on Hyde Boulevard.
20 seconds.
Now we want to do another study, spend more money until we get the numbers that we feel we want to hear instead of what is actually, what was actually on that study that was done. It showed average speeds of, I think, 31, 32 miles an hour. So again, how many studies are we going to do on the same thing?
Thank you, Rick.
Excuse me, that study doesn't cost.
Excuse me. Keith stacks up on Zoom.
Keith Lewis, 38 East High Street, Boston Spa. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello. Yes.
I'm disappointed the board has not managed to put together the budget workshops that have taken place the last five years, but I'm not surprised, given the current makeup of the board. In November, the mayor accused another trustee of lying when he referred to the mayor as a land developer. But as I showed, the mayor had actually identified himself as a land developer on multiple social media accounts. And in the press release, when he announced his candidacy for mayor, he was also listed by the Republican Party as a land developer. Bernadette did not state any kind of objection to that. She allowed the mayor to chastise and to accuse and to belittle another public servant, another trustee on the board. He has never acknowledged the fact that he was the one line either to the University of Miami law students where his bio lists himself as a land developer or to the billions of people on Instagram who rely on the truthful bios as required by the rules of the platform or to the Republican Party or to the people in the village of Boston Spa who read that press release. So I am not surprised the budget workshops have been silenced because of Frank's doing. I'm disappointed that Mary and Bernadette would go along with it because when democracy does not see the light of the day, it it dies. And that's what happens when you do these things behind closed doors. And when we can't rely on the mayor to tell the truth, we can't rely on the things in the budget to be done correctly when they're done outside the view of the public. In for a penny, in for a pound, I always say. If you lie about small things, you're willing to lie about big things. And the fact that your fellow trustees are not holding you accountable is actually a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you. Travesty is you didn't watch the last meeting clearly. Anybody else? Yes, Mike.
Thank you. Mike Icucci, 9 Russell Street. Just a couple of points about budget process. I was pleased to see, Mr. Mayor, that you released kind of a statement of the priorities and so forth, which I think is very important for the community to be aware of. So I applaud that step. Many of us have not. May I continue? Many of us have not really spent a lot of time on budget. And if I may, I just wanted to make a couple of points about the budgeting process. And to me, it's important to recognize that the budget is not simply a piece of paper or a series of pages of papers that lays out lines. It's meant to be a process and a process involving various stakeholders. The National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting points out that it is in the best interests of government to have involved stakeholders. And going on to quote this group, the term stakeholder refers to anyone affected by or has a stake in government. So again, I think every resident of the community fits into that category. In addition, the, if this name is correct, Government Finance Officers Association lays out principles of budget. And among those principles, they emphasize the goal of meaningfully engaging citizens and elected officials. And again, to quote this organization, budgets are more credible and receive the broadest support when citizens and elected officials have provided input throughout the planning process or aware of major developments and understand budget trade offs. And to me personally, and I'm not quoting any organization now, to me personally, having budget workshops is something that would be helpful to members of the public who have an interest in looking at and weighing in with their opinions on what the budget proposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else in the room? Yes.
Karen Shaw on 39 Hyde Boulevard. I'm here specifically to talk about motion C about putting up stop signs on our street. Liz, I'm sorry that you disagree with me. I love living in the village. I love our schools. I love the community. I love our parades. I love everything about it. I love the fact that there's a soccer field right down the block from my house and my kids can get on their bikes and walk down the block. I love multi-app school. I love that my third grader can walk down the street. But when you come out of my house, I live in a shallow, sold house and you make a left and you head towards Chapman Street. I will literally stand there with my daughter who's this high as people drive by like this buried into their phone. Please, please put up the stop signs. We would really appreciate it. I don't know what else to do. I don't see any cost in here at all. So I'm not really sure what the worry is. The police are already on our streets anyway. They are very helpful. We really like them here. We want them there. So please install those stop signs. Thank you.
And as you know, we even spoke with Dave Bush about making sure that if they do go up, that we are enforcing and evaluating essentially because I think it's good to have the data that goes with it ultimately. See, if they're not working, we pull them out and we go to the next steps to that point. If they are, great, we keep them and then figure out other things we might need to do on the streets. So thank you very much. Sure. See Erin McCready, but Mike Ross, we'll see which one.
Hello, this is Erin McCready from 35 Hyde Boulevard. I've got Ross here with me, too. I also wanted to comment on the motion for testing out the stop sign idea. I really, I really like and appreciate the the idea to put the stop sign there and to have it be a study. I, just a six month study. I don't think that there would be anything wrong with doing a six month study. I also support Liz's idea of having having further data collected, but I don't think it has to be an either or. I think during the original study that was done, it was when the pandemic hadn't lifted yet and people weren't back to work. It was kind of the golden era for us on Hyde because it was quieter. But unfortunately, that's when they did the study and I feel like we keep talking about that study. But it was also the measurements were taken, I believe, near the soccer field or just a little after. And so it wasn't really where people get up to max speed. Personally, I've almost been hit three times and you might think Hyde is so wide. How could you possibly get hit when you've got that kind of perception on such a wide street? But what I've had happen at least twice is cars will stop when you go to cross, cross the crosswalk. And I've actually had cars that tried to go around those cars that stopped for me walking the dog and they almost, they almost hit us as we were crossing in front of the car that was stopped. So it it really is scary, even with cars stopping when we try to go across the street. You don't feel 100% confident you're gonna not get hit if there are other cars coming. So I just, I really appreciate the effort in the 10 years that we've been here. Really haven't seen a whole lot done that's made an impact. And I don't think it could hurt to just try it out for six months.
Thanks, Erin. And thank you, Ross, who has kind of been riding me on this for sure. And he actually was the person that drove me to talk to Carla, our other attorney. We're going through vehicle traffic codes and just kind of educated on what our capacity is or isn't from a legal standpoint. So thanks, Ross, as well. Uh, let's see. Let's go to Nathan Ward. Nathan, just so you know, I sent all the emails so they could become part of the record. You did send one with respect to signage, so that is already part of the record. But if you want to say anything else or even repeat it, it's up to you. But I just want you to be aware, it is part of the record.
Hi, Nathan Ward, one Hyde Boulevard. Yeah, I'm just gonna repeat what I sent out in the email. So I do think the stop sign would help improve the pedestrian crosswalk at Chapman and Hyde. There's a couple of things that I see concerning with stop signs. You know, not everyone stops at stop signs, as you could see at Hyde and Malta. You know, several people either don't come to a complete stop or they just blow right through it. Another issue, and this is not pedestrian safety, but you know, people around, once they come to a stop, they will just floor it and create a lot of noise. I hear that again. At Malta and Hyde, there's a, you know, a lot of loud trucks and cars that just get right back up to the normal speed that they were going before they stopped. What, what I would recommend, and the pedestrian and bicycle study mentioned this, is installing RRFB, which is one of those rectangle flashing that a pedestrian would push a button. It would start flashing, making the cars aware that there's a pedestrian needing to cross. And then the cars are required by state law to stop for pedestrians. So that flashing makes people or the, or the cars aware that there's someone trying to cross with a stop sign at night. You don't see the people that are trying to cross. So even though you might stop, you could just keep on going and not see someone that's trying to cross. Because the roads are so wide, you're not going to be able to see them on the edges of, of the road. So it is, you know, a couple thousand dollars to install one of these. They're pretty effective. Studies have shown that they are, you know, effective at making vehicles stop and letting pedestrians cross. Yeah, so I would recommend amending this motion to perhaps have a three months with a stop sign and a three months with this RRFB signage and see which one works best. And then go with the one that wins. Thanks.
Couple of quick notes on that. We are attempting to put stop signs in the middle zone as well to make sure that it is visible for a driver that might not see the edges as well in that situation. So Jeff and I were talking about ways to get signage that could do that without walking away essentially. So we're looking into that. Also, RRFBs are not something you just go and test. They are actually very costly. So it's something that is, I think, part of, or at least explicit as figures in the Cap C Act listing. It's in five figures, I believe, for those. So it's not just something you go out and do. It's something that you kind of take as a next step measure, which is what DOT does with respect to crosswalks generally. You don't automatically get RRFBs. You get signage and striping. And then if that fails, which normally means something bad is happening, they go to RRFBs at that point, only after it's proven. Let's see. Jason Townley, I believe, is next up on Zoom.
Hey, Jason Townley, thirty-one Hyde Boulevard. I don't know if stop signs are the right thing to do, but I definitely would like to see what they are, how they can affect and help us walking. I've, it's been three times within the last couple of weeks where we've almost been mowed down by drivers. And it's walking the kids to school as Carrie does. It's walking a dog. And it's the most common thing that happens as we're trying to cross is we get halfway. And I think Carrie mentioned this as well and Erin too, but we get halfway and the other motorist doesn't stop. And one instance, we had the person who stopped drove over to the car that didn't stop and had to lock up their brakes, rolled down their window and scold them and let them, make them aware of the, the crosswalking signs. I think one of the major issues with the Chapman Street intersection is the fact that right now we can't see the crosswalk signs that are up due to tree blockage. And that's going to be a problem going forward with the stop signs up. I think one of the, the best things we did so far was to put the signs up on the crosswalks. I know the one on Hyde Boulevard did get mowed down. I saw it happen. It happened to be an eighteen-wheeler coming up Hyde Boulevard and clipped it. And it got hit twice. I think the second time was a nine-mo truck coming out of Columbia Extension. They were doing some utility work up there. So it definitely makes the intersections tighter. It's a great traffic calming element. But I'm, I'm very curious to see how these stop signs would work, especially since the ineffectiveness of the one on Malta Avenue just today had somebody go straight through the intersection. In fact, the house that's at the end of Hyde Boulevard, when spring started to happen, we watched the couple that sits there, watched the people blow through the stop sign and point at them. So it's, it's a tough thing. I, I think as a village, we need to do better at actually being respectful to crosswalks. I see local residents actually speeding through and not stopping at stop signs as well. It's easy to do. I get it. In the older days, we had a manual transmission. It was more of a pain in the butt because you had to take it out of gear, do whatever. We all have automatics. It's literally a gas and a brake. It's not that difficult. So be interesting to see how this all unfolds. I'm, my daughters are fourth generation in this house, so I used to play soccer in the streets on Hyde Boulevard and there were no cars. And our surrounding developments are huge now, including Malta and Boston Lake and the town of Boston, and they're only going to get bigger. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Shown your age, so we're talking about snider transmissions. Come on now. You're not that old. Everybody else in the room? Seeing no hands, we will close public comment agenda items only. Got a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Well, first off, I should always ask, do we want to remove either one of those two? Discuss separately.
They're both in the budget.
Moral Day Parade is not, however, we did have some excess from different events that did not hit their numbers. So it would basically be just reallocating to that pack. And then in next year's budget, we are including line up from Moral League Parade.
And the thousand.
As of right now.
Yeah. What's it for compared to last year?
Zero.
No, I mean, what is it literally being spent on versus last year when we didn't have it?
Well, she gave her listing of the forty-nine hundred dollars of spending. The problem is that the spending numbers have gone up precipitously and we haven't funded it in quite some time. And it started asking about this last year, but they never had sent in the budget request in that situation. So Billy Joe hit me up last week and also Tom Milton. And so we're trying to work together here to make sure a major parade in our street is essentially going to be funded properly and continued. So you're keeping it in. It's okay through this round here? Got a motion to approve the items on the following consent agenda, one and two. Trustee Fundesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carriers for those consent agenda motions. Can I get a motion setting a public hearing related to the Village of Boston Spa's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five competitive budget during the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on April eighth, twenty-twenty-four at seven oh one P M? Trustee Fundesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Is that going to give us enough time to have budget workshops?
Well, as I suggested about the amended motion there, third and fourth of April was when I suggested the one same Thursday before that. Remember, this doesn't finalize the budget. This is just a statutory requirement for a public hearing. My guy Blue Chi's point, this is something the state requires to have a discussion or a two-way budget with the public. And so that's why it's, this is the required one.
I understand. It'd just be good to have the workshop prior.
And yeah, and also.
We can go to the twenty-second with their regular meetings and still be okay with the budget. So you've got another meeting scheduled and then whatever else you need in between.
I thought it was the twentieth was the deadline for.
No, no, twentieth was the deadline for tentative budget, March twentieth. The budget itself is April thirtieth or May first.
And the public hearing, we can open at the eighth. Even if there are more budget workshops to do, the hearing could remain open beyond the eighth. And we could have like a special meeting if necessary. It is important to have the workshops before the public hearing so people know why numbers are the way they are, not just what the numbers are. So yeah, I'm, I'm all right with having it the eighth. Given this new opening, this new conversation about having workshops before then and also with the understanding that at the eighth, maybe we don't close the public workshop. We can, we could continue if there are additional workshop. I mean, we continue the public hearing if there are additional workshops that need to be happening.
I will address part of that comment later where it's more appropriate. For now, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Getting a motion approving payment to color construction of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars, ninety-one cents for the work reflected on the Hope Street Mill Emergency Projects, the attachment. Trustee Fundesa? Trustee Raymond, discussion. Under budget, we're gonna probably keep the paving work in-house. Obviously, it's an emergency project, so it wasn't in the budget per se. It will be reflected out of ARPA funds that are in fund balance, though I don't consider those fund balance funds per se. It's, it's listed as such on our AFR, but those were earmarked funds for specific types of projects. Should we, by the time we're done with this, enough for the generator for the Wells four A four B, which is discussed in the budget discussion as well for next year at this point? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Getting a motion authorizing the Village's Department of Public Works to install stop signs at the intersection of Chapman Street and Hyde Boulevard in all directions pursuant to the power according to the Village and New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, section sixteen forty A one, for a six-month evaluation period during which the Village of Boston Spa Police Department will provide enforcement of the new regulation at this intersection and provide periodic reports to the board about the effectiveness of the signs in enhancing slash protecting pedestrian safety on and around Hyde Boulevard. Should the vote, should the board not vote to remove the signs at the end of six months, then the signs will remain in place. Trustee Fundesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I, I have a little bit to say. So I wasn't really involved in the formulation of the proposal for stop signs. For those who don't know, I, I work for New York State DOT. I am a traffic engineer and I specialize in traffic engineering and solutions for pedestrian safety. And I would just have to say that typically stop always stops are used as a last resort for pedestrian safety, not the first attempt. There's numerous studies that indicate that putting always stops in don't appreciate, appreciably increase the safety of pedestrians because it essentially lulls them into a false sense of security. And also a static sign tends to go into the background and particularly on a road where traffic volumes per approach are balanced. There's a predominant amount of traffic on Hyde as compared to the Chapman approach. So it is naturally would be considered the main street, which typically you don't put traffic control on if you have lower volume side streets. There is also a whole, there had been mentioned regarding speed control. Stop signs are explicitly not to be used for speed control. And that's in the manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is published by the FHWA. New York State requires all municipalities to comply with the manual of uniform traffic control devices. Noncompliance could potentially affect future funding from different state and federal agencies. So I don't agree with the installation of stop signs, at least without, at least doing some sort of analysis. There is a always stop warrant analysis also within the MUTCD. That is typically done before stop signs are installed. I would recommend that we at least do that to see if stop signs are warranted based on those warrants. If they're not, then stop signs shouldn't be there. Again, stop signs are not supposed to be used for speed control. And it seems like that's, this is kind of what this is actually about. Because pedestrian safety, as I said, isn't necessarily augmented with a stop sign. And also, it's kind of like cutting your leg off because you got a scratch. If you're targeting when pedestrians are using that, which because it's the school had also included or requested. I don't know if you asked them to write a letter along with the.
And I, for like two years, have been discussing this and actually did a psych visit, about a year and a half, almost.
Right. But a more targeted approach would be what Nathan Ward said would be an RFB. They actually have been proven to actually increase driver awareness because of the flashing beacons. Whereas a static sign becomes just part of the background. There's numerous studies to support this. And there's also numerous studies that say that conclude that by putting in always stops, you will increase the travel speeds on the links between those stops. So the area where Box Archer Field is and every once a soccer ball goes out, rolls between the cars, we're going to probably increase the travel speed of individuals there. And also on the southern portion, it will likely increase it because people want to make up the time they lost from stopping. I, as I said, I personally don't think this is the correct course of action. There's nothing illegal about it. There's no statute saying you can't do it. But there's a preponderance of evidence saying you shouldn't do it, and it's not the proper thing to do. I believe there may be temporary RFBs that are used in construction purposes that may be applicable or a trial. And I would be willing to look into that to see if that's viable before we go ahead and just slap stop signs in. The other thing that I would like to point out is that, you know, to go back about cutting off your leg. So if they're about school, you know, school pedestrians, that's one hour in the morning and one hour in early afternoon that those pedestrians are tended to be walking there. And so a stop sign is twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, year after year after year. That doesn't really target, you know, doesn't provide a solution to what you're looking for. Whereas an RFB would actually target that and has been proven through numerous studies to be far more effective than always stops. I would recommend that. I do understand a permanent RFB is a significant cost, but I mean, I would think our kids are worth it. So I, I would, I would definitely recommend that if it turned out that if we can find temporary RFBs and, and they're effective, that we consider doing that as a permanent solution. That was actually what was one of the recommendations in the pedestrian bicycle plan. That was created with the help of the Capital Region Transportation Council, who is one of those sources that requires us to comply with MUTCD if they want to receive funding. I would also add that the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee also has pedestrian safety guidance. Has pedestrian safety guidance. They put that out a number of years ago. It's the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. And within the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, they have many, many treatments. For improving pedestrian safety that's been proven by numerous studies. Not one of them is an always stop. So. And there's a reason for that. So. But RFPs are in there and there's other treatments as well as actually the treatment that's currently there now. Is one of the basic initial treatments. Is putting up signs of both sides. We may find out that maybe just clearing the brush and improving sight distance or the trees. Might have a positive effect without even installing anything further. Because if they're partially obscured and people come up on them late. But you know, there's braking reaction time and stopping distance. If they can see them farther out, they would see a pedestrian farther out as well. And they would at least see the signs knowing that the potential pedestrian cross. I would consider those before. Installing stop signs. And then lastly, if we do as a last resort. Want to put in an always stop there. We need some of scientific. Metric. As to. If it's actually improves the situation. That there is some sort of improvement. As. Liz Cormo said anecdotal evidence is not scientific. What people feel is not scientific. We need actual data and so we need a baseline prior to those installations. And that would include. You could, could get tube counts so that you have general link volumes and speeds, but again, we're not supposedly not putting in this in for speed control. We could. Also get probably turning movement counts and pedestrian counts, and all these would be free through the CRTC. Wouldn't cost us anything. And. I think that we should do that at the very least before we put stop signs in, so at least we know. What we had before we put them in. And then actually compare. Using the standard met- metrics, which would be doing the crash analysis also prior. To installing a stop sign and then after. Because that's how you determine the effectiveness of something. Did it, did it increase pedestrian safety by reducing pedestrian vehicle conflicts? I think that this is necessary. In my position at DOT, I've seen many, many municipalities just slap stop signs in because, you know, it's a cheap. Cheap, easy fix. And then, but it's not necessarily the proper fix and quite often they're inappropriate and ineffective. And accomplishing the task of pedestrian safety. And certainly speed control. So. I'm not recommending that we do this at the time. I would rather table this motion. Until such a time that we've gotten some base data and we can also look into. The possibility of temporary RFPs so that we could test those out prior to going to a last resort, which would be an always stop.
Are you making a motion to table? You didn't not make a motion to table here.
Making a motion to table.
Oh, second. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Baskin.
Yes.
Trustee Vandensa.
No.
Trustee Price Bush. Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Rossi.
No, Liz, please. Okay, so at this point. I'd like to respond to your filibuster. Memory serves. My first. Crossing of stop signs in this village going up was on Court Street and wondering why. A stop sign would be placed in the middle of the hill. Especially in an area with inclement weather. And how would be handled? And Noah Shaw, who I no longer on the board, I had lived over there and had requested it because of the danger of speed. Slash pedestrian safety over there on Court. And Sean, I don't remember. You raised your voice on that one. You suggested in our back and forth today that there was. Study or analysis done and I actually called Mayor Romano today to ask him if that is the case. The answer is no, it was not.
Yeah, I never, I never suggested.
I, I did not interrupt you and yes, you did. Okay, and I asked you for the data and it never came up. That's why I called him. And also I asked Jennifer, because I wasn't in earlier this afternoon. To check with Bob Cavan on the same and G. Bush happened to be there and they both stated, no, it was not. And so. We have had stop signs pop in interesting areas without studies. In this case specifically, I've been mayor now for. My goodness, will be two years next week, I guess, just about here. And. It is the single most requested item to do something about Hyde Boulevard. It's not, not even close. And one of the first things you and I did, Bernard, if I remember correctly, two years ago was we tried to reach out to see what a study would cost. Because we're told, hey, you gotta do studies, gotta do the studies for stop signs. And Lavelle basically gave us the price tag initially at least of like, I want to say eleven thousand, give or take. I remember it was some outlandish number. It felt like. And stated, well, you know, it probably won't give you the feedback it would for in the first place. So why go waste the money if you're not gonna. Get the satisfaction of making a positive change. So time goes on. It's been, how many years since Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plans release? It's gotta be, I think, three almost, right? And we sit here. With nothing done. And furthermore, all this talk about RFBs and. Speed humps, if speed is what you're looking for, raised crosswalks. It's not a simple question for every neighbor on Hyde because a lot of people don't want their entire way of life distracted with all these. Physical enhancements to the street. They kind of want the street they bought a house on to live in. And just have maybe a minor interference with a stop sign or something like that that people will honor and respect. In the first place. So all this talk of sheroing and the raised humps and striking this and striking that. It's not a consistent desire for all that stuff on Hyde Boulevard. Talked to several of your neighbors over there. And it's, it's an interesting reaction as you go through the list of things that are proposed. But it seems like everybody lands on the idea at the very least, put up some simple stop signs. And here we go. And I'm not even saying to do it permanently. I don't know exactly what's going to be the result of it, but we're going to try to set it up for success. As I said, we're gonna try to find middle signs so that you can see them in the little street and also make sure that. As you suggested, we care back some of the branches of that's happening. But, you know, RFBs, as I said to Nathan earlier today, my page, those are great also to strobe a light into your neighbor's homes. And, you know, with somebody that used to face scrutiny on a sign where the Hanford is, you know, creating light and whatnot. It's not a simple thing. You don't want your neighbors to feel like they're getting strobed to death all the time either with those things. And so I even feel bad if we put a light on top of a stop sign, that won't be a strobe by any stretch of imagination. That might even be interfering, but. We'll see what we can come up with to be respectful to the neighbors, but effective on the street at the same time. It's a balance. We're also going to utilize the your speed is sign that the school district bought for our purposes of using it in that zone. And G. Bush has asked, actually asked me if I wanted to possibly look into buying. Village-owned ones. The one we currently have is pretty useless, unfortunately. It doesn't have much of a charge on it. And so something that could last a week in the field and some a day in the field essentially. And it's something to consider as well to the past. We get one on the even side of the street so. We could avoid the idea of speeding up, going further down the street. And do some self-enforcement because I think our reactions generally when we see those signs are. Oh, I'm speeding. I didn't realize that, or maybe I should slow down. All told, the idea here is to keep Hyde Boulevard a very pretty, unusual or unique street in our village. In the best way possible while keeping it safe. First step is to do some subtle changes to see what we can do. And that's why it's being proposed. I'm not gonna sit here any longer. As I said to somebody the other day, you have three options. Do nothing, put in stop signs and the speed signs I'm talking about, or go the extra step to the. Let's say larger enhancements to the street. I said, doing nothing is no longer one of the options. So it's one of two things now and. This is the one I think that is most universally accepted for now while we see how it works. Maybe you have other considerations. It's great, Sean. It's three years later. I'm glad you're feeling the need now to go and research these other things. I am truly. And go ahead, but for now. The folks want action, we're gonna take some action here.
I'd just like to say, we did take action. We did put up for the PSAP pedestrian crossing signs. And that's the first step that you would normally take. The next step would be RFBs in that progression. Now, I was unaware that you were gonna put in your speed is signs. I would suggest putting in your speed is signs without the stop signs. And try that for a six-month period to see if that's improved because I think the big, big issue here is really speed. Everybody, all the testimonials I heard, people go flying by.
Read your emails because that's not the only testimonials we've got.
Right.
Well, just trying to cross the street is an issue. That is over and over.
And a correct, correct. One of the things that has to do with that is because it's uncontrolled is speed. So if we're able to reduce the speed, that would give people more time to react to pedestrians. So I, I would recommend, you know, and they've been proven to be effective. Stop signs have not. So. I would recommend doing that first, and if you feel there isn't appreciable change. Within a three to six month period, then you can always put in stop signs. The only other thing I would add is what metric are you gonna use to measure if regarding improvement?
I trust our police and their enforcement.
Well, the police aren't qualified for that.
Yes, they.
They're not traffic engineers.
No, no, but they see our streets day to day, Sean, and they also tell us the enforcement numbers are.
Please, please refine a detailed scope of the metrics they're gonna use.
Raise your voice. I'm just sick of you belittling employees and staff of our village.
I'm not belittling. I'm not qualified to be a policeman.
No, but you would know what crime if you saw it generally, wouldn't you?
I, I, I don't know, because I'm not necessarily versed in.
I have something to say. We're still in discussion. We're still in discussion. I'd like to say add my two cents. I think it is sad that we have. This discussion and our traffic engineer sitting at the table, we have on our board.
Traffic engineer.
On our board, we have a professional traffic engineer and he was not involved in this conversation. Until Friday, when this motion appeared on the agenda. And he, so you've had, you've had discussions with the police, you've had it with DPW, you've asked them to send you letters with the schools. You had a whole and people, you've asked for feedback from people. This has been going on for weeks and weeks and weeks and months. And you have never seen fit to involve our traffic engineer on the board and it's, it's just typical. Of how you exclude members of this board from important conversations. He has an expertise you don't have and no one else has. Now, I have to say, I'm not a traffic engineer and, you know, to me, oh, stop sign, that makes intuitive sense. But you know what? I'm willing to listen to the science and the science is based on repeated studies, hundreds of instances. And if I hear from an expert that the science says to do X. That's where I'll, I'll lean because the people who give feedback don't know the profession. There, you know, I might say, yeah, it makes perfect intuitive sense, but it's not what the science shows. And so we should listen to the science and listen to the expert we have in the room and we should tap people who have that expertise. And I think it's a sad emblem and symptom of, of the exclusivity that you, how you operate. In secret and without transparency and without inclusion of this entire board.
Thank you, Ben. Except I think I started this conversation by stating that one of the first things we did when we took office was we talked to our traffic engineers. I spoke with Laney at the HD as well, who was involved with this pedestrian bicycle master plan in the first place to discuss. Where the data was and she admitted that as somebody else stated, the data came from one side of the street and therefore was not complete data. And it's an interesting statement when you get down to it because we use that document so often and yet it's. Admittedly an imperfect document for what its intended purpose was. That said. We've had the back and forth with our engineers. Sean, while I appreciate he's a traffic engineer, he is not the village's traffic engineer. I've talked with the village's traffic engineers. Matters like this and have gotten opinions and thoughts and ideas. And then we've also talked to the folks that live on these streets. That said, we have to do something. They reach out to me constantly. And I don't mind that fact. It's how I get educated on. We need to make changes on certain things and here we are. And so at this point, I'd like to call for a roll call vote and you can give your reasoning for your vote as you make it, as you know.
Trustee Baskin.
I'm gonna follow Sean's lead and vote no on this for the reasons that trustee. Raymond gave. And hope for. Continued. Following of, of what best practice actually is.
Trustee Vandensa Perez.
Yes, I frequent Hyde Boulevard. It is the way I have to go for my commute and I have witnessed. The very instances where people are stopped and then other vehicles are impatient and go around. A vehicle who stopped for pedestrians. So more signage is good in my opinion. It's good that we're testing this out. I appreciate also. Tangentially that we're gonna have the, your speed is signs. So. We're, we're testing it out. We're moving in the right direction and Sean, I, I appreciate your willingness to look into. The other option, RFP. You know, there's no reason why we can't do one and then also still look into the other. Thanks.
Trustee Price Bush.
Yes, and I feel that the parents on Hyde Boulevard have a valid concern. Most of us in here have children and remember when our children were young. Six months as a test stop sign, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything. It might help. Crosswalks, we've heard that the crosswalks really haven't been working as we expect them to. So I think it's worth waiting six months.
Trustee Raymond.
No, and again, just to reiterate. Stop signs are, are not a panacea. I know they get used that. They're politically expedient. But they're not the proper thing in this case, if you're really interested in pedestrian safety. I would also say we need to have a solid written metric. Of the method for comparison. If we're actually going to make a scientific conclusion. Regarding whether the stop signs have improved pedestrian safety. So if the police are going to be. The data collectors, I would like to know what data they're collecting and how they're gonna compare it and what metrics are they gonna use? To conclude that it has created a safe service environment for pedestrians.
Mayor Rossi.
I think we know who our. Comparers, comparers are going to be. It's going to be the residents on and around Hyde Boulevard. At the end of the day, they're gonna tell us if it's gotten better, if it's gotten worse, or if it's. Straight line for the six-month period and what they think we should do next with respect to those signs. I think that's gonna be the best evidence you get ultimately, the people that have to feel safe or unsafe under the conditions. The police are going to help add some data to it by all means, but this is one of those situations where I'd rather error on. Getting enforcement and safety out there than not. After two years of kind of sitting back and listening to the back and forth and kind of just twiddle on my thumbs and doing nothing. And, you know, we've got lucky that those middle signs got sold at a nice cheap price to us by a PTA. I can't remember which one it was. And we were able to buy those in a good quantity, but that was a lucky scenario. Now we need to kind of invest in ourselves in a way. That we start moving this forward, protecting our residents, our schoolchildren, et cetera. And I'm thrilled that the school district is aligned with us in this and is willing to help out where they can. Because they take it seriously as well. My vote is yes. It is three to two. The motion carries. Getting a motion approving the expenditure of three thousand two hundred dollars to Stanko and Sons Heating and Cooling for the emergency repairs. The hot water tanks at Union Fire Company number two and authorizing the mayor to execute any paperwork related to such emergency repairs. Trustee Fundesa.
I'll say it.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Gonna get a motion awarding the bid. Opposed, motion carries. Gonna get a motion awarding the bid for the 2024 Village of Boston's Mowing Contract, the Folsom Lawn and Landscape. For $17,500 for the season and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement after review by the village attorney. Trustee Fundanza?
I'll say it.
I'll give it to trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have a point of order.
I'm, I'm, I would like to make a motion to schedule budget workshops for all departments, agencies, organizations, boards and committees of the village. Provide a village funds prior to final budget hearing approval.
I say it again.
Excuse me, hold on. I made a motion.
Do you read that? Are you reading one or you?
I made a motion to schedule a bunch of workshops for all departments, agencies, organizations, boards, committees of the village. Provide a village funds prior to final budget hearing approval. I made a motion. No, I made the motion.
Sean's making a motion.
No, I made the motion, thank you.
Oh, you're making the motion. It's Sean's motion.
Doesn't, we don't assign motions in order then, so it's my motion. She seconded it.
Uh huh. So that's the way you get control over the motion. Alright, let's discuss.
Well, no, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion to table.
Well, we're discussing.
No, too bad. Motion to table is what superseded twice tonight.
No, no, no. You don't know. If it's in the middle of a discussion.
It's a second.
If it's in, you're in the middle of a discussion, you cannot table.
Roll call vote, please.
If you're in the middle of this, this happened, this is what happened last time. He interrupted the discussion when he knew that we weren't finished talking about it. And you cannot use tabling to, to cancel and interrupt and stop a discussion. I'm sorry.
This is just censoring free speech.
What you're doing.
We are going to have this motion later.
Because you're, because you're trying to shut us down from talking, we raise our voices. And if people don't like it, they're in the wrong place at the wrong time. The, um, the, I, I, I need to discuss.
Raise your voice and be asked to leave.
Fine. You know what? I am in order. We have a discussion.
No, you're not. You're actually out of order right now.
You are not allowed to table before the discussion is done. Yes?
I, I'm waiting for you to finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
So your question is relative to the order. I understood that the footnote, and I may be wrong, is relative to number nine.
Right. Dave, Dave Razor Rucker said it was not with the other motions. So I'm making the motion and then tabling the motion so we can get it to nine.
And the rules of, of procedure state that you're not allowed to interrupt discussion. When board members are speaking and it, and tabling is not a reason to interrupt.
That's not in our rules of procedure.
Yeah, no, you're not allowed to interrupt. There's no reason to interrupt. You can't just stop conversation.
Twice tonight.
There's, there's no provision in the rules of procedure for cutting off discussion. There isn't.
I, I just understood it to mean that he's doing his mayor announcements, we're number eight. And then you, you will be able to discuss at nine. Am I incorrect? So it wasn't necessarily an interruption. It was just a, a wrong or.
No, no, no. What, what, because you're not here regularly, what, what you need to know is that this is highly unusual. That according to the rules of procedure, no, it's not, it's not Robert's rules. No, ask Carla and she'll say we don't follow Robert's rules. According to our rules of procedure, anyone who submits a motion before noon on Thursday. Is in to, to the entire board, which is what Sean did, has the right to have that motion on the agenda. And this is typical of the, the disgust that Frank has for the, the, me and Sean. He will not put the motion where it belongs because the motion should be with all the other motions. Not at the, it's never, we've never had a motion as a footnote in small font at the bottom of an agenda. It goes with all the other motions and the disdain you show by putting it there, I find disgusting frankly. And it, but it's typical and I'm glad you did it because it, it visualizes his, his attitude towards the rest of us. And I'm sorry, but this needs to go with the other motions and you are not allowed to table. You are not allowed to table something. You can't introduce a motion, open up discussion and use tabling to shut it down. You can't do that.
You are out of order at this point. The motion.
I think you're out of order, Frank.
Most of the table has been seconded.
I'm, alright, I'm asking Mary not, not to support the tabling because all we want to do is discuss the motion. We just want to discuss the most. So a, 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 a vote for tabling is, what are you doing? Are we going to discuss this later? Are we discussing this later? We are tabling it to the end of this meeting?
No, 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 to nine.
Why are we tabling this to nine?
To number nine. Number nine. At nine o'clock, number nine.
Why are we even doing that?
Because it's relevant to budget. It's under the treasury.
Alright, as long as it's right there. Thank you. I thought you were tabling it. I thought you were tabling it till some other time. It's a typical, this is so unusual, this situation. It's not normal. So it's like, what is happening?
I can understand your computer.
Yeah, thank you.
But number eight, you're up.
Well, hold on. We've first have to vote. All in favor of the table to number nine?
I'm voting no because it should go with every other motion.
Opposed, four to one, it's approved. Here's announcements. Briefly here, because I'll have two in a row here, no matter what. First off, thank you to our events task force and also to town of Milton for a wonderful job on the postponed Easter egg hunt. Yesterday. It was a tough decision to postpone it because that forecast was just all over the place on Friday into Saturday. And I think we made the right decision, as you can see, but still we didn't know if we'd get enough volunteers, if the kids would show up, the families would show up. And it was a mob scene in that first hour especially, which it normally is the busiest time. But you couldn't move in certain areas in Milton Community Center. It was still fire safe. Don't worry, folks. But it was incredible. Volunteers did show up and we had a great time. You know, seeing all the kids happy. And also as a little side note, because the American Legion's auxiliary. Easter egg hunt got canceled on Saturday. They gave us a bunch of eggs and food. And that gave us an entire bins worth of eggs with candy in them that I was able to bring over with the bird. That's helped to the high school after the Beauty and the Beast performance that overlapped the Easter egg hunt. We were able to get some of those kids something they weren't gonna be able to get to because they wanted to go see that awesome show at the high school. So this was a win-win all around and the task force deserves huge credit for what they were able to pull off. And I continue to pull off in our community. You probably have seen it because I think it was up to like over 8,000 views just based off my post today. But Ted's Fish Fry is coming to the Village of Boston's Spa. Right on the edge where Pizza Hut was near Ocho State Job Lot. Spoke with John Fisher today, who's the son of the GM, but lives in the Village of Boston. He'll be the operator manager of this location. He actually reached out to me last night to flag me to something we saw already. We, we weren't sure. We saw the closing was happening. But you never know if that means they're gonna open a store or not. And he said, hey, we're opening, looking for the fall. And we walked through a couple of things that they'll need to do. They're gonna replace the roof, it sounds like, and do some changes inside. So it'll take some time and make sure that they have all their permitting and everything else. So we're excited for that. They're aiming to open October and November. And I bring it up because I know we've talked about some of the concerns about business. Stuff going on in the village that the challenges that we're having as much as anybody else in this area. And a moment like this is a good reminder that we're doing something right. The BSPPA is doing something very right. And while we can still get a lot more quality businesses in some of our spaces right now, it's just a good reminder. It's a good climate that we've created here together over these years and will continue to do so. And thanks to Ted's Fish Ride for that great start to the week with that announcement. That's about it for now. We'll go to treasurer's report. Somebody have that, thank you. Print it out. I never did. Let's see. Did we all get this? Was this email? From Melissa? No, that's not, no, but treasurer's report. I will say that Melissa and I have been, have been working last week nonstop to get figures corrected. And working with EFPR, LGSS as well. So appreciate her work in getting things into the position where we got a very. Good overall budget made with accurate figures wherever we had concerns. We double checked certain things as well. She brings it up in her budget preparation after many budget meetings. With each of the individual nonprofits as well as department heads, we have a tentative budget. It's been completed and set to be released Thursday, March 20th. That's already done. Thank you to all who submitted requests and attended those meetings with, where the mayor and I look at year to date figures as well as projected amounts in the next fiscal year. Utility information, she provides a chart for water and sewer calculations, including water bill, the sewer bill. Bottom line includes what was billed minus what was received. And then the added penalty says three five point four. I would urge you to go look at that chart if you have any thoughts or questions about.
What was the date of that email? Because I can't find it.
Oh, it's just the. I meant to print the attachments. I never got it. So appreciate that. Okay, back to budget for a second. As Mike pointed out, I did put out a four page summary that I would say, please read to the board. I, I think it explains some of the approaches. A number of projects this year did not get completed. Or will not get completed by May 31st. And so especially sat down with Jeff and looked at what we could and couldn't get done and how to handle it. Because to just simply go and budget again with new money for the same project would be basically double taxing. Of residents, property owners for the same project. And that's not appropriate. So what we've tried to do is spot where we have things that were unused, that will need to be used for that same thing next year. And carry the money that will go into the general funds fund balance into the same categories next year. So basically roll it back over into those budget lines in those situations. And I highlighted throughout, or actually I think I want a big paragraph of the summary, about $500,000 of those situations. The good news is overall, from what we believe the numbers will look like at the end of fiscal year 24, which is what we're in right now. We're gonna have a widened fund balance per se. Even without utilizing what we anticipated we would need to do with fund balance to put it into certain budget lines this year. Now, some of that was intended for some of those projects for sure. But the point being that we never did make the 300 plus thousand dollar transfer from fund balance back into budget lines. And we still should have some sizable fund balance spread for this year. So by putting the $500,000 into the next year, if you look at the two year overall, we're doing very well. Despite some challenges along the way, despite some capital projects we're doing, et cetera. This does not include purposely the John Street Water Tower and Water Tower information. Because those are beauties capital projects and we know enough here to say that this, those projects are gonna be funded. By increases in water rates specifically, and that's what our revenue advisory committee is working on currently. To make sure that there is no effect on the budget itself and the fund balance in the long term. By these maintenance projects and future maintenance for these for over the next 30 years, et cetera. Been working with that committee because I needed to give them the information as we learned it about what the cost would be. What the approaches should be moving forward. So you're not seeing it specifically in the budget. But it's there in that any additional raise in water rates over three and a quarter percent is going to be set aside. Either into a reserve account, which we were going to try to approve tonight, but because of Carla's family situation. We're gonna probably do that in two weeks for a water reserve fund for system-wide infrastructure. And we'll have that set aside for any extra money over and above a three and a quarter percent annual rate increase on water. We are noticing sewer still lagging. And so sewer will get the same benefit of rate increase because we need to do that. We need to get sewer fund balance higher here. We're still struggling to get what we need in that situation, I feel like. And so being that it's more or less half the value of water, it's slightly changed. We're gonna go in that direction of keeping that going up at basically the same increase or at least five percent per year. To continue where we've made some momentum, but that mastered it perfectly with sewer. All in all, concerns really exist in this budget with unfunded mandates from state especially. Retirement benefits, healthcare costs, et cetera, down the line. These are things that maybe have been challenging in the past for sure. But we've, you, you start getting some predictions from the state and from the county on some of these line items. And it becomes daunting over the next couple of years. And so, yes, we were able to, on the tentative budget at least, stay within the tax cap this year. However, longer range, we're gonna have to really consider how we're going to handle things. Because those additional figures are outpacing two percent, to say the least. In some cases, we're seeing 40% over two years for some of those line items. That's crazy fast for, you know, a budget that only has about $2 million of property taxes that we charge. And, you know, for, just to compare things generally. Our dollars per thousand for property taxes in the Village of Boston Spa would be around 562, give or take. In, for instance, the Village of Scotia, they're paying over $15 right now with very similar equalization rate. And they're looking to break tax cap this year, even with taxes that high. And so it, it puts things in perspective. Services aren't that different between Scotia and Boston Spa. And yet they're paying almost three times the tax rate. They get over $5 million in property taxes, from what I understand. Each year. It's, it's an interesting dichotomy, but you know, our residents deserve the lowest possible taxes. We can provide while providing the services we need to do and protecting the infrastructure in the future. And that's the constant balance we reach with budget every year. And so over the next couple of days, I'm getting more specific line item information to all of you so that you can see specifically some of the asks where they were. What you'll realize in our budget, we group 400 level accounting or 004, it says on the budget. We call 400 on our active fund system. 400 is what we call contractual. So 100 is personal services, 200 is equipment essentially in building improvements. 400 is contractual, which is kind of like that everything else line. But we ask our departments to go 401, 402, 403, 404 for like telephone and for this special line, that special line. It, it depends on really the department. And so you'll see 400 grouping all those things together on the budget because that's what our accountants require us to do. The state doesn't want to see all the 401s dead down. They want to see what's 400. And so that's where it gets a little complicated to go recreate the numbers because you don't just put it right next to the budget line. You gotta actually have a separate sheet to show all those things for each department. So that's what I'm trying to get for you. And I, I talked to Melissa yesterday actually about this. And we agreed that we should be giving that level at this point and we will be doing so. So.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah, just one, one curious. I know in the past, we couldn't create a water reserve fund. Because we use part of the water revenues to basically pay village bills?
No, no, we, we don't use F fund. That's, that's what that was.
Okay, so this is gonna be a, a different fund.
It, it's basically a branch off of the fund balance. It, it sort of sits with it, but it's accounted basically. And it's a lockbox inside of our numbers. And if it's a specific reserve account, we're gonna do the upfront permissive referendum for 30 days. And then we can use the money for the intended purpose without pick for the referendum. Carla wanted to make sure that we could do that for what we're titling this. We're working on just the nomenclature to make sure that we can make it specific. Instead of type, I think is the other, that reserve account where you don't do the permissive referendum upfront, but you do it every time you need to take the money out of it. That, so you want specific, if you don't want to have to go through that every time down the line. So that's what we're working on and making sure. We're also doing one for the library. Because they want a similar reserve account for state federal funding for this building that they can port into. And Mary's been instrumental in connecting us to make sure that that's gonna be happening as well. So don't be surprised when those come at you over the next couple of weeks. Like I said, we were trying to get everything done this meeting. But you know the rest of the story of what happened, the Carlos situation.
I, I would support a, a creation of a reserve account for parks and trees.
That's actually another one that we can hold off until basically Wood's Hollow with that one is my thought. But if you notice, there's $360,000 that's being pushed aside, the revenue's in there. And then it's being shown to be going out. And so it's intended to go either into fund balance or into a reserve account. or into a reserve account on tentative budget. So I agree with you. And that was not, that was not specifically mentioned, but that was the intention because looking at the Wiswell Park numbers, we could be going into the three hundreds with respect to Wiswell Park renovations. Ultimately, we'll hear more about that at the next meeting.
And we could run, we could apply for grants too that could go into this reserve fund. No need to spend just our own money necessarily.
Or spend the grant money and then put our own money in the reserve account. Yeah, depending on how you want to look at it.
Granters might like that we have a reserve account.
So anyway, if that.
Thanks for the explanation.
No problem. Anytime. Now, I would like to move to lift off the table and bring back consideration the prior motion concerning scheduling budget workshops, et cetera. Do you have the second to lift off table? And well, if you want, I'm not trying to prompt your vote. All in favor of considering that motion now? And opposed, okay, we'll go back to consideration of the motion that was previously tabled that caused consternation across the table. So I just want to go back to something from the previous meeting because I don't know where this notion that I'm against workshops, this, that, and the other thing it was. My statement in the last meeting was essentially, I don't have a dog in this because I've already sat down with the department heads and et cetera. I think Sean had agreed the timing for workshops would probably be best after tentative budget. So you could identify things you were most concerned about ultimately when you saw the budget. And I'm giving you more information for that as well. And then I said, in the meantime, we work on figuring out dates. I suggest the first week of April is probably gonna be the right course of action for that. That was what I suggested today in our email. And then ultimately I'm saying, look, majority rules here. What departments do you want? Because we have never done every recipient of money. We've never done that. Okay?
I'm aware of that. I just didn't want to leave anybody out.
Well, but, but not for nothing, they pretty much, I think only the SVPa was reduced from what their ask was. They had asked for twenty thousand, we gave him twelve five on the tentative, which is up from ten five. Ultimately, that was down a bit, I believe. Ultimately, too. So it's balanced. Yeah. So balance and plus the Belmont states. We obviously wanted to do what we can to maybe parlay some of that action next year. That's why they had increased the ask. I didn't catch myself doing it. That's how bad that was. But anyway, so this notion, again, I don't think you guys are listening to what I was saying, which essentially tell me the departments we should be doing workshops with so I could work with that. And so today, as you know, I proposed the idea of, okay, I'm gonna get to the rest of paperwork here on the next day to day and a half, the worst. By Friday, let me know what department heads you would like to have these workshops with. We'll schedule them on Wednesday, the third, and to the degree necessary, Thursday, the fourth. And we all live happily ever after and have time to get to the public hearing. And then we still have one more meeting after that if we so choose. I don't appreciate the whole, oh, you're finally seeing the value of them. I haven't said, don't do them. I'm just saying, do them in a rational, thoughtful way because, look, our department heads work all day and then have to come in for a seven o'clock or eight o'clock meeting. If we don't need to have the meeting, then it's not respectful to drag them into it. They'll come talk to us at some point in our discussions. That was my point in this whole thing. I don't know how the heck you got into this whole, you don't support this thing.
Well, I'll, I'll just tell you, I was, I guess I was expecting you to, to lead the process in terms of scheduling budget workshops in early to mid-March as it's been done multiple years in a row. And prior to the tentative budget. So that we could have meaningful input into the budget. Right now, it's more of a.
Be honest about one thing open. I don't want to interrupt. I, I just one thing I want to say to you on that because I remember this coming up. I remember sitting through it last year and here's what was happening. We were throwing darts at a board with no numbers on it at all. And so we're doing this all, well, it's, sounds like a good number, good expenditure. So yeah, we'll consider doing that. It's sort of turned into a very, for at least tentative budget purposes, unuseful time for that because you didn't know where the numbers lay at that point in time. If we took all of our requests, you're gonna be seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars over. We know that. Okay? And so my job, I feel as budget officer, is to trim the fact on round one down to something that's reasonable and balanced. And from here, find two, find things that you think I underfunded, overfunded, et cetera. And then it's a lot easier to balance the budget when you know you've got to bust one side to minus the other side in that situation. The way we approached it last year with the earlier workshops wasn't useful to, at least for the budget officer, tentative budget.
I, I thought it was useful as, as what my expectation was because that's what had happened for a dozen years prior, you know, coming up to this year. In February, I asked, you know, when are we scheduling? But when are you scheduling budget workshops? Because it would be good to have some advance notice about that. And I just feel like there's, there's been a void there in terms of just leading the way and scheduling these workshops, sort of waiting like, oh, what, what does the board want? And oh, here comes a tentative budget. Well, that's done now. We still don't have the printout. It just seems very late. And, and feeling like we are having fewer, less and less opportunity and window to actually have meaningful, not just contribution to the budget, but an understanding of what's in the budget. So you know, I'm not anticipating, oh, I'm gonna want to change the budget, you know, up, up and down. But I would like to know, I do have multiple questions about within multiple departments. There's a lot of overspending that happened this year. Why? What, and, and then there's a lot of increases.
If you have those questions, because I, I had asked us, feel free to send them in to me because I'm happy to tell you what the answer.
I, I, you know, I want to hear from the department heads and I want, it's.
Often, they don't know why.
They'll know something. I, in past workshops, they have provided very valuable information.
What the answer, if I could finish for one second, is that sometimes something gets miscoded. And so we end up having to push it or they don't realize that basically for DBW, where the anticipated location for something was supposed to be. So we end up with a labor cost too high in one line, but too low on another line. So you think that they're, you know, blowing a budget on one thing. They're not. It's just that it didn't get coded well.
All right. So, but we can't govern around mistakes. We just have to, the process, even if we're looking at a number that's wrong, we need to understand what we're looking at. And your tentative budget includes a lot of big increases in various departments. And, and that isn't just an email like, why? Okay. It's a convers- ideally, in my view, it would be a conversation like.
Is what departments do you have going up that much that weren't explained by rollovers?
There's, there's, so I don't.
Yes, but that's new.
Yeah, fires going up. Right. So this is what, this is not the appropriate venue to be like explaining everything. It's not possible.
Police is very easy answers to you. Fire is based on the contracts and the building improvements are us. We're rolling over the apron because the apron's gonna come in well over budget and not gonna get done until.
So we, we can't go through the budget at this meeting. So that's why I, I value Sean values and hope, and the public values, public budget workshops. So we can look at each department in some detail and understand what we're voting for and why. And, and why things are the way they are. Again, ideally, I would, I'm disappointed it wasn't done before the tentative budget. But I'm glad that you are open to doing it now. And I sent an email suggesting some top priority departments for us to look at. I don't think one hour, if you had one hour, two different workshops is enough. It never has been. There's always been at least double that. But the, as I put in the email, and I sent, I shared an email, have this was done in previous years. And it builds on that. But you could have in one day, for example, DBW Village Hall and Library, day two, fire and police. But again, depending on how long you go, you could combine this into two days and not three. And then day three, park and tree, community on, community or committee on the arts and celebration slash events. Those are the things that I'd be most interested in. And I just, I, I wish that it, these had just been scheduled, just pro forma, you know, just go ahead and schedule.
Two people on this board that have been putting on emails. I have two people that have not been replying. Respect. Again, like I said last time, not my dog in this fight because I've done my role as tentative budget, budget officer. Okay? So here, I understand it's your venue, if, but all four of your venues. And I'm trying to maintain that.
But it's always been the mayor who leads this process.
So, hold on, I've been waiting, guys. Okay, thank you. So I, I actually think this is not an unusual process in the sense that when you're at the state level, the governor proposes her budget. And then it's given to the each house and the legislature. Then they pour and pick apart and, you know, explain their priorities. And I, I think it's, it's good to kind of have a starting base because I agree. Last year, wow. Interesting. And I loved hearing people's thought processes behind everything. We, we were kind of aimless a little bit, and that makes it a very difficult process to, to even write the budget. So this is not completely out of place. It's, you know, governor first, then the legislatures, and then it gets voted on. I, I, we're in the middle of it right now. I hope, I don't think it'll be passed on time. That's my, my personal aside, but. It's Easter this weekend. It's a little complicated. But, you know, I appreciate that you're gonna give us kind of a breakdown so we can understand it a little bit more in depth. And, you know, I, I think going from there, you know, there might be places I'm like, this is fine, you know, it seems pretty clear. And there might be other areas where, you know, I'd like some more explanation or some better understanding about why these requests remain this way, or even perhaps like, why did we, what, what exactly was happening that things need to be rolled over? But I, I won't know that until I look more deeply at the budget first and then be able to say. And that's what happens again at the state. They look at the budget, the legislatures look at the budget, and then they have, they're called their conference committees, that both houses come together. And then they also, all the budget teams talk with the governor's budget team. So this, I think, is a process that's gonna, you know, be able to get a start opportunity to weigh in on the budget. And also, you know, if it needs adjustment, it needs adjustment and we can figure that out. So I, I appreciate the governor's efforts. I appreciate the mayor's efforts to, you know, kind of move us along and we will get there. And I think we'll be able to, I'll hope, hoping that the budget doesn't, the state budget doesn't interfere with my schedule. That we'll be able to look at this a little more closely on, you know, next week. I think you proposed, right?
I, I saw Ben's email later today and I kind of concur with the departments he listed. That would be, you know, sufficient for me because those are the ones that have had the biggest changes or had the biggest overages to the current budget. You know, I'd like to find out, you know, what happens. But I think, based on that email, those departments are probably sufficient. Wouldn't have to go any further.
Just out of fairness, real quick, because it's a fair question to ask what the rollovers were and what happened. And I can briefly do this so that everybody here has an understanding quickly here. Well-generated project, we talked about is just, it was one of the things that moved the back of the line to a certain degree. But Jeff is working on it with Labella right now and getting that actually moving forward. That was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for funds that were rolled. The sixty-six Front Street retaining wall, wall project just got held up because we had some back part of the Labella on that one. But it's again moving forward. They're getting their stuff together for us to get it into a bid position now. So that's a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars that was budgeted and rolled. Well rehabilitation project for a second, well, forty thousand dollars. And we're gonna make sure that that gets done right around June first. So that's why it's gonna be a rollover. Zoning law rewrite, we had twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars unused that was anticipated to be used this year. That shouldn't be used. Based on what we're seeing and the numbers still rolling, it would make the most sense. Why would we put that back in again, the same twenty-six five?
I just want, don't we have to put it in if it's an operational? Like, I understand the capital expense. I thought the controller or whoever tells us we have to start from, you know, zero, you know, for operational.
Well, yeah, it's, if you intend to roll over, you go down into fund balance, up back into the line. That's, that's mechanic of it ultimately. So you assume when you don't use it, the twenty-six thousand five hundred, it goes into general funds fund balance, right? And then you're basically saying, we're going to put it back into the same line again, that twenty-six thousand five hundred is the starting number for next year. And it's coming out of fund balance.
Yeah, I guess, no, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just didn't think we should be using necessarily fund balance for operational expenses.
Well, if it's, if it's a specific project or task.
Get it to one time.
Identifiable, yeah. Brownfield Opportunity Area Grant Matching with seventeen thousand dollars. We're working on that obviously right now. Full reserving work, we didn't use the ten thousand. And I pumped that actually up to twenty-five thousand for this year because of some need on that. Building plans for a new DBW building, fifteen thousand rolled over because we're in the middle of that basically right now. And not much has been built. Sidewalk reimbursements and other spending. I only did thirty thousand. We might only, we may have forty thousand actually roll over realistically. But to, in total sidewalks are at one hundred thousand dollars, which is the highest ever. The apron project that Union Fire Company, forty-three thousand nine forty-two would roll. Sarah's Arts Grants that might get paid like right now, ten thousand dollars more than that in a minute. Replacement project for the birdhouse project, there's nine thousand six forty not used for birdhouses. And that becomes a factor of the time of the calendar because June first is the cutoff. And so we're rolling that over back, but we're gonna push that on my tentative budget into celebrations. Because it seemed to confuse things immensely to have arts with community of the arts and then these sublines of birdhouse. So pushing it into a better category this time. Russian weeds funding for dead dying tree removal, ten thousand dollars remaining, again, rolled over. That all totals five hundred twenty-two thousand eighty-two dollars in fund balance. That will be falling into fund balance, but coming back out to start the budget lines next year in tentative budget. That's, that's where that all comes from. That may be why, maybe why certain categories look higher than last time. They realistically aren't if you look at the overall factors going into it. So there's that. I had proposed a motion to potentially amend the motion that was being considered here. Before I actually make the motion, I'll read it and then we'll, we'll figure out what to do with it. Okay? The amendment that I proposed is a whole bunch of workshops on April third, twenty twenty-four, and if necessary, April fourth, twenty twenty-four from seven PM until, let's say, eight thirty PM, out of respect to that in the village offices. Workshops will be held based on requests from a majority of the board as the department heads, they would like to interview. Such requests will be provided to the mayor by Friday, March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four at noon so that he can schedule the attendance of the requests of department heads that a majority of board members wish to interview.
So that's great. I, I think we'll need more time. I think our, our in past years, it's been like two and a half workshops over three days. I mean, two and a half hours, seven, nine thirty over three days. Not that we're doing as many departments, but I'd say at least at least two hours over two days for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
More sense to do three days and try to keep it to an hour or an hour and a half?
Look, you know, he's gonna, Gavin, you did eight thirty for rolling on department. We get something started and we're in the middle of it. We don't want to call them back next day. So there will be, this is not a hard and fast number. This is just something to guide us, I think, more than anything else. Because again, let's be respectful to the fact that these are staff members that come in sometimes early the next morning at seven AM as well. So holding them out till nine o'clock might not be in the best interest of anybody in this situation too. So I think it's on us to try to get these things done by eight thirty.
Can we agree on my tentative list, the DBW Village Hall, Library, Fire, Police, Park and Tree, Committee on the Arts, Committee on the Arts and Celebration slash Events?
I, as I said, I'd like to look a little more deeply at what Frank will send us before I commit to any specifics. He's sending us the breakdown of the budget, like each one hundreds.
Yeah, in, in the past, when we've tried to do something at a meeting and you've said, we'll like to do it between me, then we don't hear anything.
Well, I, I, with respect, yeah, I, I suggested last time. I think you guys heard something different than what was actually stated last time. I don't know why. And why we were fighting this. But at the same time, it's like, hi, I'm, I'm really offering the same motion I was suggesting without emotion last.
Right. No, I, I hear you. I'm, I'm glad we're talking about this. I guess what I'm saying is, a week, oh, maybe over a week ago, you asked for board input on what departments. I think we have all, all the information we need to know because we see the budget and we see line items for what's happening this year. And we see line items for what's happening this year and what's being requested next year, and we know what the important departments are. It's not like we don't know fire exists. Um, so, uh, I'm hopeful there won't be a big delay. In, um, in the whole, so I've given my two cents, so I'd like to, I'm asking that there's not a big delay in everyone else. Say, even without, even if there's a delay in your, in your reporting, to just put it on the books and let us know what's happening because that's fair to the department heads as well.
So, because it says Friday, say Frank misses the line, right? Say, say Frank for some reason doesn't get us the information. Regardless, everybody should put their information with their requested groups by Friday, but. It, it does, it does set a deadline for us to communicate that, so. So, say, say Frank doesn't get it together, but he, he's pretty good to get it together at some point. That's a great starting list, but I, I wanted to look a little more deeply at what he provides and, you know, so I can look more closely at some of those things.
I guess what I'd like to say is even if, um. Uh, Bernadette and Mary, um, don't wanna talk about something, say celebrations events, somehow we should be able to talk about those things. We should, I mean, it's an important part of the budget or committee on there.
Welcome to talk about anything you want, I'm just not gonna drag somebody, uh, out to defend it if there's a consensus majority to drag.
Right, so I'm, you're right, so I'm hopeful that this board will be interested in actually talking about a good chunk of this.
Okay, I got, I do have breakdown of celebrations, so I just have to add more of that to that, actually.
Where's B S B P A, is that under what?
Yeah, but that, four thousand, that is signed, so the Jennifer requests each year. So, uh, so I, I'm going to, uh, ask to amend my own motion here, uh, that I made technically. Uh, it's a whole bunch of workshops in April third, twenty twenty-four, and if necessary, April fourth, twenty twenty-four, from seven P M until eight thirty P M. In the village offices, workshops will be held based on requests from a majority of the board as the department heads, they would like to interview. Such requests will be provided to the mayor by Friday, March twenty-ninth at noon. So that he can schedule the attendance of the requests to department heads that a majority of board members wish to interview. I, I, I'm accepting my own amendment at this point.
Okay.
Do you accept? Original making and second was one too.
And, just for clarifying for department heads, part of it, I, I don't know if I can, when they're at, these budget workshops, in my experience, haven't. They're, the departments are at the workshops and we're definitely talking with them, but it's also a conversation among the board. It's not just like us interviewing, like as you describe it, interviewing the department, like we're having a conversation about the numbers in general.
And it's also a conversation in front of the public, that's why I think, you know, to have departments as, as many as we can do is important.
But I just, it sounds like we're putting them on the spot, it's not all about them, it's also a conversation among ourselves and coming to consensus or trying to.
All in favor of the amended motion?
I.
I oppose motion carries. We have literally seven minutes left in this meeting, uh, before we would have to hit, uh, public comments, so let's go to liaison reports, Sean.
Uh, okay, E P W, um, guess what, they did some plowing and salting.
Shocking, yeah.
And, oh, by the way, great job, uh, those guys were really diligent. I know in front of my house, I saw him come by about every hour on Saturday, so, uh, it was pretty impressive. Lowell Street Roof Repair, um, Kelly Square, uh, San Sewer Cleaning. Overflow pipe cleaned and repaired at the Round Street Reserve, sign inventory, all signs, they're gonna be reviewed. Sans Souci Building has been blocked, framed, scanned and roofed, but there's a little more to do. Uh, started painting and refurbishing, um, new, new police department station.
Yeah.
And.
You said that with question.
We got one, yep.
And some water meter reads and replacements on the to-do list is some snow cleanup and removal. Uh, continue work on the Sans Souci Building, uh, we're doing some water training for people. Uh, cleaning repair the D P W buildings, um, repair via contractor at start April first.
It's the spring, it seems to be spring.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Yeah. And then, uh, police station Thompson Street, continue. Uh, we stopped selling the installation in High Boulevard, repair catch basin on Scott Street, three trees. To be cut down and removed and a pre-stalk brines and more water need meter reads and replace. And an E P A Water Service Report, um, continuing on as well.
Yep.
So, that is what the D P G said we've been doing.
Mary Library and anything else you got?
Um, just library covered the events, which I missed unfortunately, but I predict this is a success. Um, but all of the officers of the Library Board of Trustees are gonna stand for another year. And there's gonna be some exciting news with a grant that they received from Mary Beth Walsh, who are gonna have a big check. Big check day, so that's coming up too.
So just them, turn it up.
Uh, I'll go as quick as I can. Uh, Fire Department, I just wanna give an update from last year and two, uh, twenty twenty-three. They were, uh, our Fire Department responded to four hundred and eighty emergency calls, um, for assistance. Uh, and they also dedicated in excess of six thousand person hours in emergency response. Uh, that's considerable amount of time, we're very thankful for all they do for us. Uh, in January and February of this year, uh, there has been, uh, seventy-one emergency calls, uh, and it goes through all exactly what. What the types of, included fire structures or structure fires, um, mutual aid, uh, motor vehicle accidents. And other types of calls, uh, so far, uh, three hundred and forty, fifty-four personnel hours were, uh, uh, provided. Uh, by our volunteers in this, uh, period. Um, in twenty twenty-three, they did seventy-eight company level drills, nineteen, uh, department level drills. And, uh, with a total of, uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one person hours of training conducted. So we're just very thankful for all their time and effort, uh, on behalf of our community. Uh, B S B P A, the farmer's market is eventually gonna come, I know it doesn't seem like that with the snow. Uh, right now, they're accepting vendors, um, for, if you guys know anybody that might have a small farm. Um, or a big farm, uh, please reach out to farmersmarket@bolston.org. Uh, planning is underway for, uh, the Belmont Weekend and, uh, trying to attract people to Boston Spa. Uh, and movies, uh, they have already selected, for those that didn't go to the annual meeting, which was great, by the way. Um, they're gonna be doing Secretariat, uh, in June, July, they're gonna do Barbie, so please dress up. Um, and then August, uh, honey, I struck the kids, you're gonna wear pink, I'm gonna, you're, we're gonna wear.
I will wear pink generally, you know, that's.
Just, uh, excited to announce, uh, the village, every year will go, since last year, we tried to, um, fiscally sponsor some applications for Saratoga Arts Grants. Um, we, uh, five of those, I think we only did five, I can't even think of it right now, uh, received awards from Saratoga Arts. Uh, there'll be two thousand five, all these awards are two thousand five hundred for, um, the development of a arts map for our community. Uh, sounds of summer and winter, for those that got to go last year, um, they were wonderful, I, I unfortunately, I heard they were wonderful. Unfortunately, each time I kind of got blocked out. Uh, and then, uh, make it, there's gonna be a make and take art. Uh, class as well as a Sunday, everyday sketching, not Sunday, everyday sketching class. Um, and then the B S B P A also received a grant for concerts in the park, so we're very thankful for everyone's efforts to apply. And also Saratoga Arts for, you know, looking at our community and what we're trying to do to make opportunities for people to enjoy the arts.
Dan was at the B S B P A event too, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's great. So, continuing with Committee on the Arts, um, they are doing something kind of cool and interesting and, uh, unique for this, uh, village. Um, they're going to celebrate, uh, April is, uh, National Poetry Month. And so they're doing a series of events and they're also asking businesses to participate by posting poetry in their venues, so. If you know a business, then, um, that would be great, the more the merrier. Um, the events are April thirteenth, Ball Spa Public Library, twelve to three, they're doing a poetry writing workshop. April seventeenth, they're doing open mic night at the Real McCoy, um, starting at, their doors open six thirty, all these things are free. And April twenty-seventh, Saturday, there's a poetry performance reading at the museum. So those are all free and you can find this stuff on the face, their Facebook page. And then for the, uh, Park and Tree, just a reminder that, um, Saturday, April twenty-seventh, they're gonna do an Arbor Day. Tree planting, ten A M in Kelly Park. And, um, they are also starting to plan a flower planting and. Whiz Wall, like a weekend to get Whiz Wall sort of to shape that, but they haven't, um, come up with a date of that yet.
It's nine o'clock, uh, by rules, we go up to a half hour for public comment, uh, additional here, obviously, uh, this. If we'll also get a, a quick attempt to, uh, get board response and that would close the meeting. So if you do have a final public comment to make, raise your hand on Zoom, it's a good time to raise your hand right now. For this, so that we have you in queue and God forbid we run over that half hour, so if you do have a public comment on Zoom, now's the time. I think Liz was, uh, first.
Uh, Liz, former city nine Hyde, I actually live on Hyde and walk my dog down Hyde multiple times.
Missy.
Yes, with Missy. Uh, one thing is, if you might remember, I presented data that I analyzed from the police department. Um, there were a hu- a hundred and ninety-eight stop sign, um, incidences. Actually, only thirty-eight of those were violations, the hundred and sixty of them are warnings. They gave warnings because people roll through stop sign and, um, the most of them were at Molton Hyde where there is a stop sign. So, um, you know. I don't know if this is the data they're gonna collect or if they're gonna put as, uh, an officer, you know. All day long, uh, in front of, you know, I think, uh, Sean's comments about what kind of metrics. Um, I would like to see us take advantage of C D R T C's free. Offer of doing traffic studies on that street, I mean, doesn't cost us anything, they can do. Yeah, well, you said they did, um, they, it, you know, we'll get some baseline data. Scientific data, because I don't think we really wanna put an officer there, you know, twenty-four, seven for a week. Um, in order to see how many people and if they have their police car, then everybody's gonna stop. Because there's a policeman sitting there, whereas one of those road measurements things are, you know, they're not gonna know that they're being measured necessarily. Um, the other thing on the Fire Department, I would like to see data as on their calls, it's very impressive. How many are in the village? Because there's, they serve a bigger area. And I'd like to see what the breakdown is, is the growth happening here? Or is it in the outer areas because there's more population outside? I think that would be interesting to see.
It's growing, uh, areas just to help you out because of the new higher, uh, density buildings, et cetera, just goes to pull on that.
Well, just on the whole thing about us paying for fire, what part is our piece of it? So I'd like to see that, see that information. And also, uh, you mentioned the garage study, there's a bill, you know, for a part of that. When is that gonna be done?
Well, first we gotta find out what's gonna cost us three million, six million or what, and so there's. A lot of, uh, things they have to look at to make sure a small space could fit the garage and that's what.
Well, I mean, if there's initial concept plan before the budget, I think we'd like to, to see.
There's not a sufficient plan to judge off of, yeah, exactly, and so.
Did they deliver or something?
It was a very rough sketch generally showed Jeff and see if they were on the right track for what he was looking for, and no, no bearing, it's a reality, let's call it.
Well, that, that's been hanging out there a long time and like to see some action on that as well. Thank you.
My, my inside voice will stay on that one, uh, real.
Carolyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street, I wanna thank, uh, Jennifer for posting. The fourteenth annual geranium and plant sale to the village website, uh, deadline for the Boston Spa House and Garden Club. Uh, order deadline is Thursday, May ninth, and, uh, as I said before, the proceeds go to our public gardens in the village. Uh, May is Preservation Month and in light of that, um, the Historic District Commission. Is sponsoring an informative workshop, researching your historic home. It will be held at the Boston Spa Library Community Room. It's an opportunity for those folks who have an older home to, um, use some online resources. And this is a hands-on workshop, uh, accessing historical and public resources will tell you how to date your house. Um, it is May ninth, seven P M, free admission, everyone is welcome. And, uh, Jennifer also has that, that will go on the website. Uh, finally, I want to just mention, it was very helpful to have the draft master plan for Wiswell Park. Which, you know, showed up on last month's agenda. Um, and I will condense, because it's late, I'll condense my comments. But I did meet with two garden clubs in the area, the Boston Spa House and Garden Club and the Timely Herb Group. And in general, just to summarize, um, I got a lot of positive feedback about the draft master plan. Um, everything from about time to positive suggestions about using native plants. In Wiswell Park, I don't know if that's going to be possible, and then a very specific comment. Um, about, uh, you know, the need to leave the pathway as planned. Um, the one that goes from Front Street Deli through the park. Uh, there's some concern that if that is eliminated, then people will just cut through the park and create, you know, a, a. A dirt path. When I met with Timely Herb Group, um, I don't know how many of you know Mary Lyle, but she reminded me. That in nineteen eighty-six, the Timely Herb Group was instrumental in adopting Wiswell Park. As an adopt a plot, and apparently that was a thing back then, the group actually did quite a bit of work in Wiswell. I had only been in the village about two years or one year by that time, so I was not aware of it. But apparently Wiswell Park in nineteen eighty-six was the New York State, uh, winner. Of an adopt a plot contest that had been sponsored by a nationwide magazine. I say that because, um, Mary was able to find the Burke Brandon letter. Recognizing, um, the efforts, um, just so you have that for the minutes. Um, final comment would just be, budget workshops were very helpful during the, more than two years ago when the Comprehensive Plans Steering Committee. Actually got a chance to preview that and work on their project after that. Thank you.
Carolyn, just, could you, if you have any, can you please, um, send your, those comments you got to Caitlin at the Park and Tree?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the house? Yes.
Karen showing again, thirty-nine Hyde Boulevard, I just wanted to say thank you for the trustees that voted yes on the stop signs. So those that voted no, I don't disagree with the things that you've said, I would welcome any point in time to come hang out at my house. It's not just when the kids are crossing for school, the street is beautiful, there's people walking, there's people jogging, there's people running, the bike. Plan that we did, I thought was fantastic, I don't know why it sort of stopped in motion a little bit. I don't know if stop signs are the answer, I just know that something really needs to be done. And I'm really happy that we'll have them up for the summer months, so at least it does lull you into a false sense of security, but. At least I have, there's something that the police officers can stop, whenever we've talked to the officers, they said, well, the person's only doing thirty-five. And I say, well, if you only hit my kid at thirty-five, like what's gonna happen? It's a, you don't stop at a stop sign, it's a clean, I think it's a cleaner ticket for the officers and maybe they can argue it a little bit differently. I'm saddened to see that Sean has so much D O T experience, we've been talking about this since before you came on board. I, I truly love the trustees to get together and work together to make this village the great place that it is. Um, and follow-up question, school's out next week, uh, will we be opening up Kelly Park?
Uh, i- if the weather will cooperate, uh, the answer is most likely yes, uh, but, uh, let's see what the next couple of days bring and we'll begin to, uh. Kind of pray into that, uh, department. We also wanna have the fencing up for, uh, football and basketball sooner or later, so that's one thing we wanted, maybe to get them before we. Like open it for masses.
I have just a question.
Yep, no problem. Anybody else in the house? Ray.
The map truck, I'm trying to ease. Doctor said more walking, if I can do.
It's a good point.
If I could, could I have just a couple of minutes before my time so I could report on the uh event yesterday? Go for it. Min, or for the non-committee, the task force.
And we will not count this against a half hour of uh. Please, please be.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to uh first of all, the committee. Uh, the committee did, I'm sorry, the task force did a wonderful job along with the Lions Club. Uh, along with any other groups.
Well, the donations from the Legion.
The donations from Legion, which Frank mentioned.
Um, some Rotarians were also involved.
There were a few Rotarians there, um, and a lot of family members that were there to help. Uh, must say the Easter Bunny was awesome, as was the giant egg. Uh, it was sort of the family member. Um. But I wanna thank more the people, because the people that came, when we opened that door. Uh, I got sacrificed and I had to be put out in the lobby to hold people back from getting there, getting in. And finally, when I moved and was able to open one door, it was like, you know, the great flood. Uh, I would estimate well over three hundred, three hundred and fifty people. Uh, I did not hear one negative uh comment at all. Which sort of holds true with all the events that we put on this village over the last year or two. Um, you don't hear negatives, kids were thrilled, they uh. Because of the uh donations, we were able to add some eggs in the afternoon, but everybody got twelve eggs, everybody was happy with that. Uh, there was fifteen or twenty of us that got together on Monday night and stuffed four thousand eggs with candy. Uh, that's a lot of eggs, that's a lot of candy. Uh, and everything, just about everything was given away, except for what Frank did take up to the play. Um, crafts, they were coming out of there with some of the, the most adorable little crafts, you know, with chickens and. Bunnies and everything else, it was just great and they loved it, they had such a good time. So these kind of events are really, really important to this village. Not just, you know, uh, the big events, but the smaller events like that. The uh, it's important, we need to keep that going. Enough said.
That'll be your real comments.
Um, I've heard uh a number of comments that we need to get data, we need to. Study things uh for these stops, you know, not stop signs, we gotta, we gotta have a study first or. We, how are we going to get the metrics? How are we going to be sure that this is the truth? Well, I think this all sort of started with us taking input from the residents, did it not? We, the residents were saying they wanted to have traffic slowed down, they wanted to have safer crossing of the streets. And we took that as what we, what we gotta do. But when it comes the other way and we try things, oh no, now we gotta do a study to make sure it worked. Why can't we take the input from the residents that are there? You know, ask her, you know, is, do you feel it's working, you know, by your house? Do the other residents think it's something that's working? You know, that could be done, you know, and, and again, the police report that Liz brought up, I'll go to that. See how many uh different, what the difference is there? It's good data. Um. I also heard, heard Sean say something about. Feelings, we need to not go with our feelings, you said that that isn't the important information. Hundred percent agree, hundred percent agree that we need good information. How we gather that, we may differ on our, our ways of doing that. Um, but would you agree, Sean, that if somebody is just expressing a feeling, it's really not as important as real data? Would you agree with that?
I don't think you'd use it as a metric in comparison whether something is safer or not.
Okay, or in general, if somebody is feeling something. My point is that I also heard, well, I'm feeling that I'm being politically targeted. So what's the, what's the data that you're using for that then? I haven't seen any data, I've seen feelings and I've seen emotions, but I haven't seen any data, bring me some data. Um, last thing I'll say is growth in Milton and Boston was also brought up. There's a lot of growth, a lot of apartments going up, a lot of multiple family housing, a lot of multi-unit housing and. We can't provide for them in the village anymore. It's too bad we didn't have a Walmart or something in the area where people could go buy sporting goods and stuff, you know, just saying.
And this is when I like Keith Lewis talk after that. Keith, go. It's yours. Go ahead, Keith, there you go.
It's Louis, thirty-eight East High Street. I wanna again remind the board uh that the seventy-five thousand dollar penalty that Frank used to sway the board. Into selling Woods Hollow is arbitrary, it's not included in the contract. Um, that may be the, the projected amount the vendor would have made from the entire job. But it's being proposed as a payment for the vendor only marking trees. The final executed contract that was compromised, when the date was reduced by eighteen months without the board approval. Technically makes that contract invalid as it was signed without authorization. This figure of seventy-five thousand dollars is arbitrary, it's not contractual. And as you finalize Woods Hollow, as you mentioned tonight, it's imperative that you take those facts into consideration. Before you throw away village money that should be paid for the property in part. Because no municipality may pay more for land purchase than the assessed value. So when Milton did their deal memo and put down the gross payment amount, that's the entire purchase price. And that is the amount the village should collect, buyout negotiations on an invalid contract should be done separately. Now, the most important part of the trustee's job is your fiscal responsibility to the village and our financial health. And I believe the tentative budget becomes the final budget if no final can be agreed upon between passage of the tentative. And the final deadline, which is why the workshop should occur early enough to have substantive discussions as a board. Before the tentative passage takes place. Democracy dies behind closed doors by allowing the heavy lifting department and budget requested discussions. To take place exclusively by the mayor, you reduce the contributions other trustees can make. You create a disproportionate power dynamic where the mayor not only filters the majority of the logic and the facts. And as Ray said, the feelings through his lens alone, but you also reduce the other trustees ability. To make real contributions that can impact a final budget, the largest part of their job. In addition, you add more stress to an already stressful process by not utilizing all the brain power of the entire board. But instead create a lopsided dynamic where the mayor rules the process and the outcome by putting a handicap. Upon the other trustees, thank you.
In the corrections uh column, it's not assessed value, it's appraised value that a municipality cannot uh purchase over or pay over. Uh, just to be clear on that. Uh, Jason Townley.
Hey, uh, Jason Townley, thirty-one Hyde Boulevard. Uh, just a quick follow-up, um, I don't know, you may have said. Uh, earlier, but uh, are the, the in-street crosswalk signs, are they going back uh in the crosswalk areas? Um, I know some of them were damaged and I know uh some of them are missing. Um, I didn't know if they're going back. Uh, and as far as the flashing lights. Uh, when a pedestrian presses flashing lights, I definitely want to second uh the opinion that I think that would be a little intrusive. Uh, in homes having flashing lights. Um, it's, it's not a city over here, so to speak. Uh, we have some streetlights and stuff, which is fine, but I think those flashing lights would be a little bit of a nuisance. Um, and then the last thing. The, the intersection currently at Hyde Boulevard and Chapman, uh, the ADA sections of those. Uh, crosswalks are currently covered in snow, is that a resident issue or is that a village issue? Because I'd be more than happy to go up there tomorrow and clean that area out. So that we don't have to crawl, you know, climb up the snowbanks to get through uh those intersections today. As I was going by, my six-year-old was climbing the snowbank, uh, as I was trying to help her up as a, as a car went through that intersection. And kind of buzzed past us, so it's a little bit of a hazard as it is.
Uh, two things then, Jason, uh, one, uh, in reverse order, uh. Basically, today I was discussing with D P W trying to pop out uh areas, uh, intersections and uh crosswalks and whatnot. Especially Milton Avenue uh today, because uh it was almost impossible to traverse it for bus stop purposes, et cetera, and they've begun doing that process. Uh, it's just, there was an enormity on this one, I.
Yeah.
Stand where all the snow came from in the last week of March just about. Uh, but they're working their way through to correct any deficiencies like those.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll try to pay attention to that uh tomorrow for you, uh, on Hyde, you're saying at Chapman and thereabouts.
Yeah, it's impossible, you have to kind of climb over the chat, the Hyde side, uh, as you're ending Chapman. Uh, to get over to the other side of Hyde Boulevard, which is where we're on that other side, opposite side anyway.
Jennifer is uh intently listening to this and will uh deliver that message uh to D P W if I don't get to him first in the morning. Uh, number two, uh, if we have those signs, yes, I, I'm also trying to figure out if we can find actual stop signs. To go in the middle as well to help show folks the new uh, you know, prohibition that's uh at that uh side of the intersection on.
Yeah, I, I know we had, um, I know they were purchased kind of secondhand and some of them were yield and some of them were stop. And it was a little bit confusing, you know, it doesn't say yield, hey, they're halfway in the cross, you know, crossing the road. Can they still go through the intersection? The answer is no, you can't, so I know some motorists were definitely confused in that fashion.
Yep, and so we'll, we'll take a good look at our inventory of that stuff as well and uh improve on that. You know, step one is getting the normal stop signs up, step two is to see what we can purchase that will, as I said, not walk away on us. Uh, if we put in the middle of the street, uh, but uh, you know, at the same time, be safe there and not necessarily get hit by a Nissan Wheeler. That shouldn't be on the street in the first place, just saying, thank you. Anybody else in the house? See none, can I get a motion? Uh, oh, no, I cannot get a motion yet because uh, forward response if they're setting.
Just quick, um, Ray, if you have interest in planting flowers on village property, if you please contact Caitlin. And work with the Park and Tree Board and they'd be happy to work with you on that and the Rotary Club, thank you.
Anybody else? Look, you're coming in real time there respectfully.
Just, sorry, the um, I'm excited about the uh, the pickleball courts and basketball courts in, in Kelly Park. Haven't had a lot of detail, is there any funds required of the village?
We had some uh put aside, we also have fifteen thousand due by accounting toward it.
And we have some that we've allocated this year.
And this will be done in time for this much year, so.
You know how much that is?
I don't know the exact number, but uh, it's, I think. We, we had last year's pricing and fencing, so we gotta get just the new prices at this point. Yeah. And okay, uh, can I get a motion to the vouchers be audited in the meeting adjourned at nine twenty-three PM? Trustee Raymond discussion, all favor. Folks, folks are curious, see you in April, everyone.